Don't be like that. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Town Council meeting of September 9th. If you could rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, and please stay standing.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As you all know, we lost yet another one of Bristol's finest firefighter Frank Souza. I'd ask that we all stand for a moment of silence. Thank you. So Frank Souza lost his life, and we lost him very recently. He was a firefighter. He was a dad. He was a son. He was a friend. He was a coworker. If you had the opportunity to listen to Billy Van Voest at the funeral, which we did, to listen to the kindness that came out and the honesty that came out, Billy talked about angels at the end, and actually before, because a lot of things happened to Frank, and yet he continued. In this last one, the angels were our Bristol Fire Department and our Police Department, and they came down to save him, but they weren't able to do so. Frank left his wife Ursula and his kids, his mom and dad. He was with the Defiance Department for 25 years. He was our town fire marshal, and in classic fashion of our Fire Department, at 4:00, when you and I, or 5:00, I don't know how long you worked till, but at the end of the day, you go home. Frank at 4:00 would punch out, and then start his volunteer duties at the same place. And he achieved the highest rank of a volunteer, which is the deputy chief, which is truly impressive. So he was our fire marshal. If you don't know what that is, he did our inspections for the town buildings and other buildings in town, made sure that people were doing what they needed to do to keep themselves safe and their neighbors safe. I was impressed by the outreach of kindness, and if I could just stop for a moment and say, I gotta tell ya, I am tired of losing people. This is the third time that we've lost, and we lose so many more people, but I'm talking about people who just give back to the community, and this is the third one. And I do that, and we appreciate what happened, and what I'm talking about is the town giving back. Thank you to the citizens of Bristol. The outreach was impressive. If you're wondering why the chief is not speaking right now, it's because he can't. That's how much he loved Frank. And I respect that, and I told him that I would share these thoughts, and he just couldn't do it. And that's what happened. At the Fire Department that night, talking with his coworkers, his members, his men, his women, the chief wanted me to make sure that I shared that the department was a big thank you to them. They're healing, and it's slow, and we're here to help them. If I seem like I'm out of words, it's because I'm gonna miss Frank. He was one of those people that brought a smile to your day, and anything you gave him, he asked for more. And he was just a wonderful person, and we're gonna miss him. Did anybody else want to add anything?
Mr. Chairman, I think you said it so well. We're just very thankful and grateful for the years Frank has given us. He'll be sorely missed in this community. And to Chief, you and your departments, his brothers and sisters, he stood beside protecting our community day in and day out for our safety, and we just have to be there once again for his family, his friends, and our department, and just be there as a community once again for one of our brave and proud members of our public safety.
I'd just like to extend my deepest sympathy and heartfelt feelings towards the family. It's unbelievable to lose Frank. I worked with Frank on a few initiatives, and he was a remarkable, wonderful man with a large heart for Bristol, and he'll be truly missed, but he'll live on in our memories.
Yes, I would just like to concur with all that's been said. It's another tragic incident that we've had in the last few months. It's been very difficult on many of our, certainly on all the families and on many of our departments, but I want to express my sympathy again to Frank's family and to the chief and to the department members. And I also want to say that, you know, attending the services, I couldn't be more proud of your department for how terrific they were in honoring Frank's memory. And I can't imagine pulling up to an accident scene and realizing that it's one of your leaders, or one of your own. And everything I heard about that night was just remarkable professionalism, and our departments are just second to none. This, our Police Department, I know, worked hand in hand with you, and then just a few weeks before that with Sergeant McCann, and you both worked so diligently on keeping order. I think the people of Bristol have so much to be proud of with our departments, and I just want to thank you all very much for that, and if you could pass that on to you men and women, I think we would all appreciate that.
Thank you all.
Frank was a great Bristolian. Frank was always there. He was always good to meet, and he'd try to help anybody. So we've lost an important presence in our town, and as others of you have said, we will always remember him.
So unfortunately, we have to move forward. And in classic Bristol fashion, there's always a positive move forward, and Walter Burke, our Community Development Director, Walter, you have a new title, good for you, Recreation Director, works very hard with Diane Williamson, this is where I was going with Community Development, along with Ed Tanner, and actually, I don't know, Walter, you're gonna share a little bit more information, there's a lot of people involved to get this. HES Grant, in fact, we have a few people to talk to us about it right now, right? So what you're gonna hear about is a HES Grant, you've heard about this a few times. HES is the Health Equity Zone. This is an initiative that is not the Recreation Department, interestingly enough. This is a town initiative, and you're gonna hear from Walter, and through Walter, what the goal is. And the goal is not just to give someone a bicycle. The goal is not just to say, here's a gym, go lift weights. The goal is to say, maybe those things, but to find out what we need in our community and target those things. So what do we need to make our community a healthier place, whether it's, I'm not gonna steal your thunder, Walter, but whatever it happens to be, and I'll send it over to you, but this council and this town is very excited about where this is gonna go. So Walter.
This is the official kickoff of the Health Equity Zone initiative. The Health Equity Zone is a grant that was given in a partnership through the Rhode Island Department of Health. The first year is for $132,000, and year one is to create, to do a needs assessment of the town and identify the pockets of areas that are inequity, areas in which the socio-economic position is much lower than the rest of the town, the needs are greater, the people that basically kind of fall through the cracks either culturally or economically or socially or stress-wise. And we're going to identify all those locations, and I'm gonna introduce Greg Pereira, who is the representative from the Hosley-Witten Group, which has been hired through this grant to orchestrate and do the needs assessment. And Emily Spence, who is Masters-level Bristolian, Masters of Education, and one of the coordinators of the Thrive by Five organization. And I'm gonna let them speak, but after the first year, we will have the ability to apply for up to $400,000 each year to implement an action plan that's going to be developed this year. So we're going to do a needs assessment with the community involved, we're going to develop an action program, and then we're going to implement those action programs over the next four years, and hopefully create programming that can be sustainable so that the help that we give the community can continue throughout the grant and beyond. So I'd like to introduce Greg Pereira, who will give you a little bit more information about the project.
Good evenings, Chairman and Members of the Council.
Good evening.
So as Walter mentioned, the overall intent of this project is to reach out to the disenfranchised pockets in the community that face socioeconomic barriers, but also language and cultural barriers. The project overall is intended to build upon the foundation that's already been established here in the community by way of Emily Spence, her network through the Bristol Warren, Thrive by Five, and Beyond group of folks. So right now, we're in Phase One, and we are looking to organize and coordinate the collaborative, and that's reaching out to nonprofits and community organizations for their buy-in into this. And again, it's not to replace the Thrive by Five and Beyond, it's to support them and to help them expand their reach and what they do in the community around healthy living as well as quality of life for Bristol residents. So right now, we're reaching out to collaborative participation. We have our project website. We've got a couple of flyers, so we'd like everybody to take one home and pass the word. Get everybody to go to the website, we're on Facebook, we're on Twitter. And what we're doing right now is we have a Community Partner Outreach Survey, where we're asking these community organizations that already exist, as well as individuals in the community, also, you know, sporting organizations in the community, restaurants, food vendors, supermarkets, convenience stores, for their participation in this, so that we can then train the collaborative around some of the topic areas that we wanna move forward with, so expanding on what Emily's work has done with the Thrive by Five Network and Beyond. The next step would be to train the collaborative, you know, hopefully tapping into some of the talent that's already in Bristol, but also hiring outside people to help come in and train the collaborative. The next step is then to do some community outreach and some community events, so we're gonna be having the collaborative do the trainings, where they're gonna do some public education forums on topic areas such as access to healthy foods, or whether it's, you know, after-school programs or whatever the mental health needs are in the community, identify what those gaps are. And then once we've had the educational component, we've had the community outreach, we're also gonna do some physical design assessments of the community, where we're gonna look at the walkability of the community, we're gonna look at the bikeability, we're gonna look at access to healthy foods, and identify what all those barriers are so that that can then later inform our work plan, which is the final deliverable of this project. The end product is the work plan, but just prior to that, we're gonna, our last public engagement piece will be a health summit, likely in early or late winter, early spring. We have until April 1st for this project. And that health summit is intended to not only let the folks know in the community what the results were from the baseline assessment of community needs, which is the main piece of this project, but also let them know that there are these existing programs in the community, and hopefully by having these existing programs in the community buy into the collaborative and participate, we can highlight their programs, and we can have, you know, public workshops at their site, and we can highlight their talent, we can highlight their services, so that everybody's kind of reaping some of the benefits of this project. As Walter said, it's gonna result in a work plan, and we're gonna develop the work plan for that. Walter also mentioned that there's four additional years at $400,000 each year to go after for federal money, and that money can be utilized to expand the programs and services and enhance what's already happening in Bristol. So it's a really great opportunity, and it's also one of the things that we're hoping to leverage some of the community organizations to participate in, and hoping that, you know, we were just at a Thrive by Five and Beyond meeting last week, where folks were talking about cutbacks to their programs, and they were kind of in limbo, and they're not sure where things stand. This is an opportunity for the community overall to continue to look for money to help either continue their programs or enhance their programs and expand their reach in the community. I'm gonna turn it over to Emily to talk a little bit about her role. We've hired Emily as a subcontractor for this project, given her expertise and knowledge in the field, but also with her established network of the Thrive by Five and Beyond. So I'm gonna turn it over to Emily.
Greg, just please sit down.
Sure.
I'd like to ask, is this a brand-new program, or have any other Rhode Island cities or towns done this already?
The town of Bristol is one of 11 that have been funded through CDC.
So nobody's completed it yet?
No, everybody, it's the same grant period, so it's April to April. Bristol is probably later in getting started and getting mobilized, but we are mobilized. We have our website up, we have our survey available. Walter's done his community outreach and project announcement kickoffs to municipal officials, to the community organizations, and the social service agencies in the town, and Emily and I are starting, we have a Health Equity HES office set up in the Community Center at Colt State Park, and that's gonna be the hub of our activities. We're hoping to have some community workshops there. That's where Emily and I will be, you know, several days a week, and that's what we'll be operating out of, and so it's...
It sounds to me like it's a great opportunity to do a lot of good for some people.
Absolutely.
But it seems to me that the key thing is to do this first year correctly, because if we're gonna spend all that money in future years, we wanna darn well know where we're gonna go with it and use it the best way.
Absolutely, and that's why our first step is to reach out to the folks who are currently in programs now, so that we can identify what the gaps are, we can identify if there's any project or work plan efficiencies, so that, you know, some shared resources, so that when we do develop the work plan and the town does go, you know, after hopefully a large piece of money, $400,000.
How do you plan to involve the council and other town committees in the decision-making?
In the decision-making of the grant application?
No, in the decision-making of this first year, ready for the grants.
I'm assuming that we can do monthly updates. We can either do that by coming here, or we can do that by, through email, and just providing like a status report. We certainly hope that you'll come out to our community workshops and to our public forums.
We should probably tell you that if there's 11, we're expecting to be first, so that's where our expectation is.
We're hoping, we're hoping for that.
I'm sure you're gonna achieve that, no problem.
We're hoping for that, yes.
Emily?
Good evening. Hello. I'm very excited to be a part of this project. Walter talks a lot about how to keep people from falling through the cracks in our community and creating a better life, and I see this project as a way to fill the cracks and to keep people from falling through them. You know, through doing the needs assessment, we'll be able to see what those gaps are and create programs to address those needs, as well as expand on programs that are already existing. I know you've heard both from Craig and Walter about the Thrive by Five and Beyond group, and for those of you who don't know, that was a group that I co-founded two years ago, and it's a group of agencies that work with families in Bristol and Warren of all ages. It started out working with families who had younger children, and now we really have expanded, which is why we're called Thrive by Five and Beyond. But we meet monthly, and we talk about what's going on with all of our programs to create a more efficient network of agencies, and we, as Craig mentioned, we heard about two different programs that are either threatened by severe funding cuts or a program that's closed just over the summer. So I really see this HES project as a mechanism for creating a framework to create this sustainable system that can help our community for years to come.
Thank you for what you do.
I have, I just have two questions, 'cause I agree, you know, I firmly agree, if you don't have your health, you don't have anything in life, and I think this is a fantastic community changer for all of us. I just wanted to know, how long is the mean assessment going to take? What's the timeline on that?
The project of the assessment and the action plan will be finished by April.
April, alright.
Yeah.
And are you going to be involving any of the local gyms, or...
Pretty much everybody.
Everybody, possible.
The Thrive by Five organization is made up currently of about 35 different nonprofit organizations.
Okay.
The Food Pantry, the Mazaeo, the Eldicare, the Steering Committee consists of myself, Diane Williamson, Maria Rossini, and Sarah Klein, the Assistant Director, and then Emily and Craig. But yet, we are gonna be looking for people that are disenfranchised, that really don't know where to get help. There's a very good friend of mine who is a commercial fisherman in Bristol, and I was talking to him a couple of weeks ago, and he's coming down with Parkinson's disease. And how is that gonna affect him and his family and his life? And then he shared with me that he wanted two of his friends who are also suffering with Parkinson's disease, that have really, have some really concerns about accessibility issues. And this will be a great avenue for them to come, explore alternatives, and then not just talk about it, but be able to have the resources to do something about it, to really raise the quality of life for everybody equally throughout Bristol. Another parent, these parents came to me to register eight of their grandchildren. This woman only spoke Portuguese. I had to take my Manny Pacchico offline and have him work as an interpreter, and I sat down with her, and I talked to her about her raising her grandchildren all alone with her husband, her and her husband, in Bristol. They don't have any money at all to be able to raise eight kids. Certainly, those are the situations in which free camp for the summer, obviously, but how much more can we do to raise the quality of life of that Portuguese family? And we're gonna really hunt out those type of people compassionately, but we're gonna put our teeth to the grindstone, I guess that's the word, the word.
I don't think that's the right saying, Walter.
We're gonna make it work, but we're gonna make it work, and we have the tools through this program to really make a huge impact in the quality of life of people in Bristol.
So to summarize, you're gonna figure out what we need?
Mm-hmm.
And then apply for the money to get it done?
Correct.
That's spectacular.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Mr. Clerk.
Mr. Chairman, Members of the Town Council, the first item on this evening's agenda is the Consent Agenda.
Motion to approve the Consent Agenda.
Second. There's a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any post?
The next item, our submission of minutes of previous meetings, we have Items A1 and A2.
I move those meetings, the exception as written.
Second. There's a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any post? Thank you.
The next item is Item C1. This is the first reading of Ordinance 2015-17. This is the so-called recycling ordinance. You also have, provided by the Solicitor, some solid waste management rules and regulations.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to continue this to the next meeting due to the fact that the DPW Director is not present tonight. He will be available the next meeting. I'd like to have him present since he's a big part of this ordinance.
That's a great idea. Is there a second? Second? Any discussion?
Tim, I think that's very wise, because this is a whole lot of words, crossed out and so forth. It looks to me as though the C1A is a restatement of a lot of the rest of it, but we need time to go through it, and of course, as I expressed to you before, I'm not in favor of the proposal to force people to recycle and have their rubbish picked up, so we need some time to address all those issues.
Definitely.
Appreciate you're gonna continue it, because it's an important matter, but there's no particular deadline.
Well, this gives you a little bit of time to flush it out.
Thank you.
Yep.
So we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item, Mr. Chairman and Members of the Town Council's, Item C2. This is the first reading of Ordinance 2015-18. This is for an amendment to the comprehensive schedule of fees, which essentially removes the provision for a 2:00 AM liquor license.
So to remind everybody, this is, the fee itself is an additional cost to be open until 2:00 AM, and that has never been the practice of the town. This has been on the books for many, many years, and came up recently when we were discussing it with an applicant. So this is the first reading to remove that off our fees, would also then hopefully remove the discussion.
I move that this represent, first reading to remove this item, and I have to make the remark that we're good at putting through new ordinances, and we very seldom cancel one, and I think it's a good thing to do it sometimes.
Yep.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any post? Thank you.
And finally, Item C3. This is the Ordinance 2015-19, which deals with various tax exemptions. This is the first reading.
So I spoke with the Solicitor earlier today, along with the Clerk and also the Tax Assessor, and there's a couple of things missing off this, so I would ask that we continue this one also. Kind of a motion of that effect?
So moved, Mr. Chairman. Second.
So we have a motion, a second, to continue. All in favor?
Aye.
Any post?
Could I just ask you, Julie?
Certainly.
Would you be able to, by the time of the second reading, give us a definite idea of whether this is cash positive or cash negative?
Yes, I can discuss with Chris and Belair, and we can come back to you with that.
It's, certainly, we motioned second and moved it forward, but just for clarity's sake, this is actually a, kind of fixing what is currently the practice, so it is already figured into the budget, there is, it's a net zero change, so it reflects what we're currently doing.
But maybe you could at least confirm that.
Yeah. Mr. Clerk.
The next item, Mr. Chairman and Members of the Town Council's, correspondence from Robert Healy for his client, Van Luke, doing business at Bristol Buffet regarding licensing.
Mr. Healy, I see you there, sir. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you again, Board. I'm here, I think the letter speaks for itself, but I'm here as a courtesy, because this council has been very, very good in terms of making the attempt on creating business in this town, and Mr. Luke appreciates that, and so do I, and I don't want to just send in a letter. What it's asking is that we continue this matter. We're definitely going to be opening a restaurant in Bristol and look forward to doing that, but because of complications with the licensing process, we think it would be easier all the way around on both your end, our end, and the general public end, that we open all at once, getting the licenses after the December 1 period starts. So for that reason, we're probably going to be putting this on your December agenda, if that's at all possible.
Counselor, can I ask you about one element of this? You'll be back in December asking for the license, I take it?
Right, I believe we discussed adding a license in Bristol. My understanding is that in the December meeting, there will be no need for that.
I think it's easier for us to do your schedule than what was talked about last meeting.
I think so too, and I think it's in the best interest of everyone.
So we appreciate your courtesy in that. But isn't there also, behind the scenes here, an issue of previously unpaid billings to the...
That's part of it, yes.
...further?
Yes.
Is there any, that's not exactly our business, but it's the business of some of our constituents that we're here from.
Understood.
Is there any chance of getting that settled between now and December?
I do not believe that the corporation that owns the license has any assets that would be able to do anything with that, so my guess is there's nothing there. My client certainly would like to start new business relationships with the people in the community. The problem for him is he really just, I mean, from what I understand in terms of the outstanding debt, which the individuals in the community have...
Mr. Healy, is anybody...
Wait, wait, one more time, please. Thank you.
Here's my take on this. In the ordinary case, when there's simply a transfer of a license from one owner to another.
Correct.
We often say, well, subject to the laws and... We often say, well, subject to the laws and resolutions of the town, but also subject to any unpaid bills being paid. Well, now that's a little difficult to apply in this case because the, uh, ownership has been, uh, shifted before the petition. But from my own point of view, I feel like representing the needs of those who have been perhaps temporarily stiffed on this, even though it isn't the same as the normal process.
Yes, and I understand your position and I certainly sympathize with that. As I indicated last time I was here, as a liquor distributor, I've frequently sat in that position. So I, I well understand it and I understand the, the operation of the law. And that's why moving it out of a transfer situation into an available license situation may be the, may be the answer that, I mean, I can't, I always looked at the, the situation and I asked myself, we extended the credit to this person, we made the decisions on that, and now I'm asking the council to, to sort of go out and collect my debts. I'm not really sure that that's.
Well, I, I must say, I appreciate your sensitivity to the issue, even though you can't solve it. But I'd like to say, Mr. Chairman, that I hope between now and December that something can happen to, uh, rescue those good people who have large debts, one of them up as much as eighteen thousand dollars.
And, and my understanding is it's substantially more. And that's why to, to start the process, I mean, if everybody would come in and say, you know, they take X on a dollar, maybe that would work. But my understanding is that there's substantially, um, one, without disclosing, I can't really disclose where the debts are, but my understanding is it's multiples of that.
Well, we've got some time to work on this.
Please.
Uh, Mr. Healy, I echo, echo Councilman, uh, Harashov's sentiments. And I wanted to say, is there anybody, has anybody reached out to the proprietor? Has anybody given them a call? Have you confirmed that there's any, there's no way to seek some sort of settlement for these business owners?
I, I believe my client has spoken with some of them, um, but obviously.
Could we try again?
The multiples out there make it very, very difficult to, to engage in that type of a situation.
Could we try?
I'll, I'll ask him to try. I mean, certainly not a problem for that. But I, as I indicated, I, I think that, you know, then if we start dealing with one, um, you've got a problem with the next, we've got a problem with the next, then you're certainly looking at trying to satisfy everybody at once in, in a sense of fairness, if that's what we're actually trying to do.
So I, I need a couple of points of clarity, if I could, from the solicitor. I was, maybe we could, for our next meeting, give this council some, um, counsel about what can, what's the correct process for the transfer? What's the timeline for a transfer? If we want to create a new license, what is the process to do that new license? Um, it would be great to understand what the timelines are, what the process is, because, um, as been said here, is that if the license expires on December 1st, what happens at that point? I mean, we've, we, since I've been on the council, have removed that license. We've changed, we've changed the ordinance and brought it back by one. And to be quite honest, that's my preference. The chief and I had some conversation and I asked him about creating a new license. And we concur very clearly, which is, I think this is actually an opportunity, just so everybody understands where I'm coming from, that this is an opportunity, we've had so much conversation about alcohol and licenses, this is an opportunity, not because to, not to create a new one, but to get rid of one. So we have one less. And I'm concerned, and I'm sure we all are, that there's only so much that we can do with the current police department, with the current members of the police department, and then we're going to be spending more money. And it's not just the money. It's the safety aspect of it. This is no reflection on your client, you or this license. It's just, this is an opportunity in my head to make one go away. Um, but I'd like to know for this council, the next meeting, if you would.
Sure.
What's the timelines? What's the correct process? You know, what are our options? And what should, you know, whatever we decide to do, what is out there and what is the correct way to go that way? So.
Okay. We'll be happy, be happy to provide something for you for the next meeting.
Thank you.
Well, I just have, I have a couple of questions. I think at the last meeting, it was unclear whether or not the prior owner was in bankruptcy.
Right.
Did they file for bankruptcy, do you know?
Uh, my understanding is they did not.
So there, there's no, I'll ask the lawyers in the room, there's no recourse for the vendors, is that it?
The vendors can sue.
They can sue, okay. So that, that would be their only way about that would, and that would depend on the amount that is owed as to whether they'd be like in a small claims court or what court they'd be in?
The, the, from a legal standpoint, they can always sue. The problem is that if you're judgment proof, you're judgment proof.
Right. If you don't have money, you don't have money, right?
Right. Blood from a stone issue.
So I'm not, I guess I would have to ask our solicitors, like what are our options, if any, to, to pursue that or to help in some way? Because, I mean, I've probably been no bigger critic of some of the liquor issues than anybody on this, on this council. But what I don't see is, you know, when a, a business is here for their third license of some sort, whether it's outside or whatever, there's a whole group of people who stand up and say, if you don't do this, you don't care about economic development. Now I see this businessman who owns two restaurants in a neighboring community that our, uh, police chief could easily, and I guess any of us, could call the police chief in, um, in Warren and find out if there's been any issues with either of those two establishments.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know if there have been. My guess is there probably have not been.
Not been.
Um, and now we're talking about maybe getting rid of a license and we have this very large building that somebody is, is interested in taking on, fixing up, paying taxes on, and, um, and running a restaurant and maybe a banquet facility of some sort, perhaps?
My guess is it's gonna be, uh, family buffet style, so it would have to lodge for that.
Right. I mean, I'm not, I understand the concerns of, like, you know, I don't know what the behind the scenes deals are on, you know, who did what, when, where, why and how, and if there was a deal between your client and somebody else. But to just look at it as a straight business transaction, I mean, I don't, as much as I, I care about the people in the businesses locally, I'm not sure what we can do. And, and that's what I'm struggling for an answer, like what can we do as a government body to try to get some relief for the businesses that have been stiffed by the prior owners of this establishment?
Right.
Because short of your client paying them all off, you know, in full, and I'm not sure why.
To be honest with you, my client can't do that.
No, and I mean, I just don't, I don't even know that why that would be fair, to be honest with you. So I, I don't know what the answer is. And so Andy, I don't know, I'll ask you, 'cause you represent us, if there's a solution to that, or?
Um, no, unfortunately, it's, it's, it's a private matter. Um, if it was a transfer of the license, the law requires that, um, they be paid. But, um, without a transfer, there's, there's nothing the town can do. It's a private matter between the parties.
Good.
So, um, we'll come up with something for the next meeting to address the other question about whether, you know, by the same token, there's nothing you can do there, but by the same token, since it's not a transfer, you have pretty much open discretion as to whether you want this license to remain out there as an available license or not.
Well, Andy, I'd like to.
How you wanna deal with all your licenses.
Well, one thing that I just want to say is, if I'm not mistaken, and we'd have to go back and look at the video or on the, uh, in the transcript, I mean, I think it was pretty much left pretty clearly to Mr. Luke, that if we didn't pursue this avenue of the transfer, um, or creating a new license now, and he waited till December, then that there would be, that he would definitely receive the license at that point in time and that there would be some, like, you know, whether it's a new license being established or something else at that point in time, that there would be something, like, at the same meeting. Do you know what I mean? I don't know if you were here, I can't remember, Andy, if you were at the last meeting or not.
No, I, I wasn't, but I mean, I mean, there may have been individual comments, but you have no authority to do that. Even if you, even if this license is there, um, you can, if you have a license, anybody can come in. You could have ten other people come in in November and file for the license, and you could be facing here in December 1st with, you know, eleven applicants looking for this one license.
Okay.
There's no way you can reserve it or guarantee it for anybody.
Well, the one thing that's.
Unless it's a transfer, which would require the payment of the debts.
Okay, but I just want to go back to one thing. I know that there's some, you know, I know that people, I, I think there's some, many issues that are going on here. I think that I would, my understanding is that we have not made licenses of a value, that you don't, we don't sell our licenses, they don't go with the business. They're, you know, we either transfer them or they cease to exist. And we, and we have not, in as long as I've been here in many years, we have not denied a liquor license for new business. You know, for anybody that wants to start a new business in this community, we have not denied a license for that unless there's some particular issues with the building, for example, or a very serious problem with the potential owner. I mean, I have to go back and see. But in general, for a business that wants to start, or a restaurant that wants to start, that's in good standing, the chief has done the work on, you know, looking up, I'm thinking of a couple, like a, a Gooding Avenue, other places, um, you know, you've looked at their history from other communities, and we kind of give them the license, create the license if we need to, give them the license and wish them well. I'm, I'm having this sense that this is being treated differently than that. And I'm not sure, well, I, I think I have some ideas as to why. But I think if we're gonna change our license policies, then I think we need to change our license policies. But I think that we need to have a workshop and discuss that because I'm not sure that this is the forum to just, like, make a new policy because somebody doesn't like this business, or somebody doesn't want, you know, because there's other people involved. I mean, somebody's paid a lot of money to buy a piece of property with the intent of opening a business. And that sounds, that's very typical of what people have done throughout the downtown and throughout other areas in town. So that's just my comments. I mean, very concerned with the direction that this is heading, that's all.
Well, Andy, uh, it seems to me this is sort of a classic instance of law versus equity. And I'm interested in the equity of this. And it seems to me, uh, I have that we have your explanation of what our options are.
Okay.
We still have the prerogative to deny the license.
That is, that is correct. Um, but you have to have some reason behind it, not just that. I mean, I, I understand your concerns, but I have to remind you that the Bristol Town Council does not have equitable powers.
Does not have what?
Equitable powers, as you were saying. This is law versus equity and we don't have equitable powers.
Well, that may well be, but I want, I want equity anyway. I don't want to see our citizens get stiffed.
Okay.
So I really believe that the parties involved would be wise to seek some kind of accommodation or compromise on this matter. Otherwise, I'm not gonna vote for the new license.
I, I, I think you've, I think you've made that loud and clear.
I think I have.
Well, then perhaps someone from this council should sit down with the prior owner and see if they can work something out. Because that's the person that's missing in this discussion. And unless somebody's willing to go out and to talk to them and find out what the situation is, how do we put this on other people that have nothing to do with them? I mean, it, you know, like, that's where the issue is, is the prior owner who's not paid tens of thousands, if not hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of bills.
If I may, to.
No, just one second. Counselor?
All I was gonna say is thank you for your correspondence. And it seems like there's a lot of concern, uh, to this matter, and we do have time to deal with, considering your correspondence of that timeframe. Uh, due to the chairman and solicitor, I look forward to your recommendations. I look forward to the input and collaboration of my colleagues further on this topic. Um, as of tonight, though, I was just gonna suggest that we receive and file and continue this matter to the next meeting.
That's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Is there any more discussion?
Well, I'd just like to hear Mr. Healy's comment to my comment, if you don't mind.
Certainly, absolutely. Of course.
If, if I may, I was just going to follow on, on Councilwoman Porella's, uh, conversation. I mean, if this person had gone and purchased a, a building elsewhere in the town and came in and applied for the same license, um, type of a, a situation, a new license in December, he wouldn't be facing these same problems.
That's not a fair comparison, sir. So, but I would like to stop right there. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you, sir.
The next item, Mr. Chairman and members of the town council, is the appointment section of the, of the council's agenda. This item G1A, Fourth of July Committee Membership List for 2015, 2016.
See, Bristol has a way of going from a tough conversation to a very positive one with the Fourth of July Committee. We thank everyone for all that they do.
And I make a motion that we adopt and accept the 2015, 2016 membership list.
I'll second that.
And just to add that, uh, next Thursday, they will be hosting a wine tasting at Linden Place just to give a commercial for the Fourth of July Committee because of their efforts and hard work, so.
So not only do you get to go to Linden Place, but you get to taste some wine, too.
And maybe even become an active member while you're there. They can sign you up.
So we have a motion and we have a second by Halsey. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Item G1B, uh, Mr. Chairman and members of the town council, you have the Harvard Commission Advisory Committee. There is a one position available with term to expire in August of 2018. Your currently seated member, Timothy Sullivan, 60 Cogswell Avenue, is not seeking reappointment.
Thank Mr. Timothy Sullivan, um, and, um, just accept his resignation. With thanks. That's how he started, yeah.
Is that a second?
Second.
So I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
And finally, G1C, the Capital Project Commission, you have the resignation of Matthew White.
Accept the resignation of Matthew White and thank him for being part of this, um, commission. Um, I'm just gonna take a brief moment because it's such a good commission that we elaborated on two meetings ago. And, and Tony, we had a discussion of, you know, the input of the Capital Projects Commission, and I had spoken to my colleagues about how important this commission is. And there is a couple of projects that are very large in scale, but I think as a council, we can put perimeters on that commission so it doesn't hold up those projects. I think the voters voted for this commission for transparency on all these projects that come forward with grant and bond money, and I think they should be utilized. And I just wanted to state that for the fact.
But we have an alternative member.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to echo that, that, um, I, I think that we're gonna miss Matt White, because he, he was the one on the committee who had actually, in his career, built things. We need to get somebody else that has that same, uh, set of qualifications.
But we have an alternative member that we had approved. So, I mean, if he's interested, we, whether we wanna interview him or we've already interviewed him and move him up and then look for another alternative, which might be the best course.
Luke, could you reach out? I think that's a great idea. Could you reach out and find out if he would be interested?
Already have. He has applied for the full position. Uh, we have a letter of application, but it came in late for this meeting, so.
So if this council thought it wise to appoint him to that position this evening, can we do that? Or do we need it to be done separately?
Yeah. Uh, you, you can't do, it's not on the agenda. You can't appoint someone.
Fair enough. So let's get, if we could put that on the next agenda? I think it's a great idea, Mary.
It will be there.
Thank you. So we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Before we go any further, this is the part of the show that I always say, thank you to our boards and commissions for taking time out of your evening, uh, taking time away from your family and your friends to make Bristol a better place. If you're interested in a board or commission and you wanna get involved and you don't know what you can do or what's available out there, reach out to any of us and we'll tell you what it is and see if you're interested in it. If you're not interested in that, we'll find something for you. But again, thank you for what you do.
The next item, Mr. Chairman and members of the town council, is item H1. This is the second reading for adoption of the removal of an accessible parking space at, located at one, in the vicinity of 106 Bradford Street. You have, I don't know if you did receive , uh, late item correspondence from the police chief dated yesterday. Um, basically, the, this, it wasn't, I just received it myself. Uh, so it, um, basically, if I can just summarize, the, uh, the chief is recommending that the request, uh, should be denied because he has ungood authority that the family that is, uh, located at 106, uh, is in need of the space.
Well, that advice is good enough for me, and I would move that we deny the petition.
We have a motion.
For a second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor to deny?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item is, uh, item H2, under Old Business. This is, uh, the petition of Richard Ruggiero, uh, again requesting council consideration for flashing lights at Gutierrez School.
Good evening. Before you, before we go into this, if I could get a motion, uh, our next agenda item is about also, uh, school zone and lights. If we could just get a motion to combine the two so we can have.
So moves.
One discussion there?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Good evening. Welcome.
Good evening, good evening. So how do you like it on the other side of the table, Richard?
Well, after listening to this, I'm kinda happy I'm here. I'll be quite honest with you.
It's not only warm in here, it's warm in here, right?
Oh, it's really, really hot. I thought I'd be early with Old Business, but I guess I was mistaken.
The literal hot seat tonight.
I'm just here for an update on the, uh, request that I had made sometime in May. Uh, I spoke this morning to, uh, the town administrator, but, uh, as I had said to you in May, I, I'll keep coming back until, uh, I can at least do what I think is right for, uh, the children at Gutierrez School, so.
So I spoke with the chief today, and I know that, uh, the chief has, in fact, I think the administrator was at a meeting today. the administrator was at a meeting today, right? Were you?
Well, I was the, but it was for the other item, H3.
Maybe you could update us if you would.
This one here, I have also some information.
Spectacular. Please.
Do you want me to get right into this, Tony? Okay. As you had requested, Chairman Caloral, I had taken the task on with regards to studying the area of concern with Mr. Rogiro. I did go down there once and met with him. We posted several signs clarifying that it's a school zone, reduce speed, the crosswalk signs are highly visible. I went out and made sure that the crossing guard there was equipped with a vest, a stop, handheld stop sign, hat, gloves, everything that was needed. As the council is aware, we assign an officer, sometimes two, to the arrival of that school when parents are dropping off children and the buses are arriving in the afternoon at dismissal time, we do the same. There's at least one officer there, sometimes two. I think we're doing everything in our power at this point to make it as safe as we possibly can. This matter was discussed with the superintendent today. There's been some barriers placed on the outside of that playground area, just in case if a vehicle does lose control, it won't end up in the playground if there are children at that time playing. However, as you know, we're in the process, and I think that's what you're asking, to move forward with flashing lights on Hope Street, which will cover the Colt School, Reynolds School. My concern is, we have a library there, we have a post office where we have many pedestrians crossing, whether it's children, elderly, and everything else. We petitioned DOT. They did place in, two days ago, signs identifying the area as a school zone. I've come up with some information and forwarded it to the town administrator, which he'll be sharing with you, with a possible cost for putting some flashing lights on Hope Street. I think that's where we're at right now. That is where we're looking at. We're concentrating on both sides of this. However, Hope Street is probably where we need to focus our sights at this point.
So, an update on that also, is that I reached out to our reps, our local reps, in regards to the dollars for these signs. And just to give everybody an update, chief did some homework on this. It's already been in front of and approved by the State Traffic Commission. Am I correct with that? Okay. And what that means is that it's a state road, and you've got to get their okay to do it. And what it does is it allows us to put up some 20 mile an hour signs that are, Tim, you're going to love this, you ready? LED, potentially, yeah. And potentially solar powered, too, right? There's a multitude of benefits. Obviously, one of them is a green. The other part of it is that you don't have to cut up the sidewalks. You just put them in. There's no wires, there's no nothing, so. But, but, this not only benefits the school, but as the chief said, we've all seen close, and we've, some of us have seen actually people get hit there, and that's just not okay. So, this is a step, and I know that the chief, as you do with all the things, educate first and then enforce. So, may I suggest very clearly that if you see a 20 mile an hour sign blinking, that you go 20 miles an hour, because nobody wants a ticket, and we don't want to, I know you don't want to give them out, but we certainly will. But back to Gitteris School. Richard is here asking some, for an update, and I'm hearing you, or at least, at least the way I heard it was, is that you've talked to the superintendent?
That's correct.
And you want to, please, expand on that. You look like you want to, Tony.
That's correct. Actually, chief and I, both of us were in attendance. We met with the superintendent, the director of Buildings and Grounds, in Pauline Silva, to discuss the two items, obviously, Hope Street, but Gitteris. Let's stay with Gitteris for the time being. And as the chief already pointed out, there is quite a few items that have been taken care of in the area, you know, signage, the installation of the barriers there to protect the children, the crossguard, and so forth. And I had an opportunity to speak with Mr. Rogiro this morning, and we sort of shared some ideas, not necessarily agreeing, but we shared some thoughts, you know. And he said, well, if not, because I pointed out, not only we have all the additional signage, but it's also controlled by stop signs, that intersection there. But his concern mainly is folks coming out of Hope Street onto Washington, going towards the school. That's where, you know, he claims that there is the most, where folks pick up the most speed, and that's the biggest concern. So, that being said, if anything, you know, it was maybe considered one area of flashing, but not necessarily, because the other way is, do we install on Washington, the upper side of Washington? Do we install on the bottom part of Washington as well as High Street? Then we would have three different locations to install, you know, flashing lights. Do we do that? Is it necessary? You know, that would be the question. But I think we came to some consensus that the area of most concern would be coming out of Hope Street onto Washington.
So, to put a fine point on it, is it necessary, is, from what you've done and the improvements that have happened, is it necessary? Should there be a, in your opinion, chief, should there be a 20 mile an hour sign or school sign, blinking light, something like that?
An illuminated flashing light would not hurt. However, as I said to you, I do believe that Hope Street is where we need to have some lights there. I did set up a radar trail there, collected data. I'll have to go back and pull it out, but it was nothing that was alarming, that people were taking, you know, with all respect to Mr. Rogiro, you're coming from somewhat of a stop from Hope Street onto Washington. Unless you're going to be taking that curve at a high rate of speed, and you might end up on two wheels.
Well, chief, let me make a suggestion.
Yeah.
What if we made Washington Street one-way, heading to the west? We've got a lot of one-way streets for good reasons, like Waller Street. Supposing you just said Washington Street's one-way, you can only go to the west and you can't come to the east?
If I, if I could.
Please, Richard. Oh, welcome. Hi, how are you?
I don't disagree with anything that the chief has said with regards to the signage and everything that they've done, the police, to try to make it safer. I think he did one of the things that I requested, moving that sign that was blocking, that the tree was blocking, and moved it to right to the, well, at the beginning or at the end of High Street, so that it's very visible when you stop. And I don't disagree with anything. He's done everything in his power. There are police there in the mornings, and there are police there when school gets out. So, I don't think that's the problem that I see, because I get there around 3 o'clock, and I park on Washington Street, waiting for school to get out. And as I said to the administrator this morning, the cars that go from High Street and stop at that intersection of Washington and High, and can see the sign, school zone, when they make that left, there's not enough speed that they can build up to be of any danger to any students. And if they've built up any speed, they're already past the school and about halfway down Washington, heading towards Hope Street. The problem that I see, and why I think a light, a blinking light is needed, because I think it makes people more conscious of it being a school zone, is when you make the left-hand turn or the right-hand turn from Hope onto Washington, and now you're heading towards the intersection and towards the playground that is right adjacent to Washington Street. That traffic needs to slow down. That traffic needs to be going 20 miles an hour. And if a blinking light, in my opinion, and I'm not a traffic expert, but I know, and I told this to Tony, when I approached Rockwell, when I approached the high school, it's not the signage that makes me slow down, it's the blinking light, for some reason, for a person like me, and I think there are many people like that. That light tells you that caution is needed. That light tells you, you must slow down, you're approaching a school zone. So, my opinion, and I said this to Tony also, if I'm sitting where you're sitting, cost is not an object when it comes to the safety of children. And as I said to Tony, and I think Mary was part of that council, and Halsey was too, we went out on the limb and blocked Bradford Street. We made a lot of enemies when we did that. It was not a, it wasn't not a cost factor, but it affected a few businesses.
And we probably saved lives.
Right. But we felt that was the safest way of protecting the students that were going across the street, some of them unattended during the school day. So, I will be very happy if you agree to put one blinking light, and I don't know, was that the south side? The south side, to make sure that the traffic coming from Hope Street down Washington knows that they're entering a school zone. And that's very critical, because they're entering and coming upon the intersection where it's the busiest. And if they're going 35 miles an hour or more, it's very, very dangerous. So, I mean, I'm not looking to spend the town's money, but I just think this is a safety factor. I am going to present to you tonight, when I leave, a letter for the, from the principal, who agrees with me, that she believes that a blinking light is needed. I mean, I would love two, but I'm not greedy. I would certainly take one. And I want to commend the chief for everything that he's done, and the police officers, I think it's made it much, much better. I worry more about during the day, when there's no police presence, the kids are playing in the playground, all it takes is one child to dot out, and somebody coming at a speed that they shouldn't be in a school zone.
So, for clarity, we have similar situations, but not. The Colt Andrews School is a state road, whereas this is a town road. Being a town road, how does, and help me out here, how does the school committee get involved in this? Because this is a, this is a school committee aspect, whereas the state road is not. I know they're obviously connected, and I should say that I've reached out to the school committee, vice chairman, a couple of the members, and the superintendent, so they're aware of the conversation that's happening. But how does that, how does the school committee weigh in on this, and what is the next appropriate step if it was something that we wanted to do?
Actually, because the request is before us, the ball is in our court.
Okay.
Right, and I don't see why this was a.
From one minute, please.
Sorry.
This was an interesting discussion, because actually, I had that conversation with the, well, we had that conversation with the superintendent. And we asked, okay, so, who's responsible to install the light? Well, it's on the road, it's the town. Who maintains it? The school department would maintain with assistance from us. They would do the timing, they would do the scheduling, all of that. That would be on their court. But it's always been a joint effort, even with the other lights that we currently have, it's been a joint effort between the school department, where we provide not technical assistance, I should say, not financial, but technical. On this part here, if the request is before us, we incur the expense, unless we can get grants, safety grants, which is, you know, we're, one of the things that Pauline was willing to explore, school safe zones, and see if there's any grants available.
It would seem, and it would seem that we would want to get their input, because it's part of this, and I would say that, I don't know what my colleagues think, but either way, I'd like to hear what their thoughts are on it. Because I've heard, you've, you're sharing a conflicting view. I've, you know, I heard the superintendent was, didn't see that it was necessary for a light, or didn't see the need for it. I want to be careful with my words, where I hear you telling me that the principal says that it is needed. So, be interested to hear a unified view from them, whether, whatever they decide, what they could give us back?
I've, I'm, don't think I'm an alarmist, but I've sat there through one grandson, he was there two years, and now I'm going through another grandson who has been there four years. And I wouldn't be here if I didn't think there was a need for it. I commend the chief again on the Hope Street situation. That, I think, was long overdue, and I think that's something that really, really needs to be attended to. But, all I say is, while you're concentrating on that, just put Washington Street and Gitteris in that same mix. And then I think the schools will be safe, safer than what they are. That's my only concern at this point.
Can I just ask a question? Maybe I missed this. How much does one of these lights cost, approximately?
It depends on what kind you go with, right?
If you get a flashing caution light type of thing, that's a school zone?
What I did is, I asked the DOT to tell us who the contractors they use, because we don't want any problems later on with DOT saying that we put something there that shouldn't be there. So, they gave us two vendors that they are on the state bid. One is Rossi Electric, the other one, I believe, is Arden Electric. And the price that they gave us, just a quick ballpark figure of two lights, south and north, on Hope Street, could be anywhere from $15,000 to $20,000, according to the type of equipment that you elect to put on it. So, I don't know. Let's, let's say it's 15, 18,000. If you would put an additional one on Washington, you'd add another 9,000 to that.
Chief, who incurs that cost? The town or the state?
Well, that's where we're at right now, juggling.
This just, this enlightens me. It's very discourting, because not too long ago, we were addressing the Rockwell School Zone, trying to get that up in a legal sense with that flashing light. And me and Tony, and yourself, and the state had many conversations of how, when schools are involved, on how it falls on the municipality, and is that balance that I think you're going through right now?
Right. And what I elected to do is take one step at a time. I wanted them to approve it. Once they approved it, we kind of got their commitment to it. Now, we're asking them for some funding. They're telling us the funding is not there, but I believe the town administrator and the chairperson have reached out to some state officials, and with any luck, they're going to pay for all of it, or at least a portion of it.
So, why don't we do this? Why don't we do this, and certainly, Tim, please share your thoughts. Why don't we do this is, we've, why don't we get a cost on it? If it's, if what has already been suggested, that's a state one, is there another option? Maybe it's the same price. I'm not suggesting cheap or more expensive, just is it appropriate for that area? Let's get a price on that. And we should reach out to the school committee and ask for their input as a, as an official response to this. So, we have it for the record, if nothing else. Because they should be weighing in on this, because it is a town road as opposed to a state road. And I'm interested, that doesn't mean that's going to say yes or no, but I'd like to know what their official opinion is on it, too. And at our next meeting, we can get the cost, and we can know that either they're for or against it as an official response on it, and then we'll make our decision at that.
Can I ask, while you're doing that, I mean, I didn't, I didn't realize they were like quite that high in cost, but, you know, maybe in the interim, while we explore if there are safety grants out there for this purpose, you know, just like even a sign there, like a, you know, slow down, school zone sign without the flashing lights. I know that's not what you're asking for, Richard, but in the interim, if it's going, because that can't cost anywhere near that kind of money, and it's something that could get done much quicker than.
There are signs there, Mary, on both sides of Washington Street.
Okay. Okay. Oh, there are, okay, so, I guess Richard's right then, he proves my point, because I didn't really, I go down there a lot, in either direction, so.
Chief, have they ever used speed bumps? Would a speed bump help in that area?
And that's what I was thinking, too, was a speed bump. Not to think of the disaster, trying to get rid of it.
While you're thinking about that, Richard, I just want to say, you have a strong case, it makes a lot of sense.
I know.
It's common sense. I agree with you. Children's safety is paramount, it's worth the money. But I just want to also be clear from the chief, on that one light, coming down from Hope Street, are you in favor of that, or are you feeling a different scenario? I just want to be clear in my head.
No. I would definitely not object to having one light coming in from Hope Street, traveling eastbound on Washington.
Okay.
I don't see that to be a problem at all.
As opposed to Hope Street, right?
Right. I, as I said, we need to have Hope Street covered. And if we can get that third light and put it on Washington.
But I guess my point is, the school zone on Hope Street, by Gitteris, is that necessary? Would it be more important to move that light onto Washington Street? Because there's not a lot of kids or people crossing for Gitteris School on the Hope Street side, the Hope Street side down by Colt Andrews.
That's not what we're talking about.
No, aren't you talking about two lights on Hope? Oh, you're talking both directions?
Right. Three hundred feet from the property line-
By this down here, okay, I'm sorry, all right, I'm sorry.
Of Colt and Andrews School.
Right.
And then there would be an additional one, is what Mr. Ruggiero is recommending on Washington Street.
Right, 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 that's what you think about.
I would, I would support his recommendation.
From the down from Hope Street, yeah.
Right.
Yep.
Traveling east on, on Washington.
Mr. Chairman, I would move then that we continue this matter to the meeting of September 29th, and in the interim, request, uh, more data, specific ideas, and costing that would be involved.
Cost analysis on it.
Do we have a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any other discussion?
Just real quickly, that, um, you know, I think we all had a good discussion, and getting back to the school committee, the superintendent, the options, the prices, um, this, just everything that's involved, so the next time Mr. Ruggiero comes, uh, there could be some progress, uh, instead of just coming for update and update and update.
But I think we should ask the school committee, or the superintendent, whoever it's sent to, to judge it on the merits of the need, and not like, oh, wow, it's going to cost us twenty thousand dollars potentially if we say it's important, do you know what I mean?
I think, I think the town administrator- I, um, pointed that out to him this afternoon at a meeting, and he concurd. Um, we said it right out of the box, we're not putting a price tag on people's safety at all.
Right, right.
He just said, if we can justify it, we can make it happen, we will make it happen. And I know that, uh, the chair here has been pushing that for a little while on Hope Street. The message was loud and clear that it needs to be done.
I just want to say thank you to Chief Canario, the town administrator, for their cooperation, and thank you, people, also. And the only suggestion I'd make to you is this, as you drive through any of the communities like Middletown, Newport, Bristol, Portsmouth, Barrington, when you approach a school, notice if any of those schools do not have blinking lights. I think you're going to find that, in these communities that surround us, most of those schools will have the flashing lights that I'm asking for, or the, the one that I'm asking for on, uh, Washington Street. I don't think there's a community system. In fact, I'm not sure, I'm going to say this, at Portsmouth High School, I think there's a blinking light as you approach the driveway, and the school is so far back, that there would never, ever be a student walking out onto the street. But I thank you, I've taken enough of your time, uh, but again, thanks to the chief and to, to Tony, and I just wanted to do this-
Please, come on.
And I'll be on my way.
So, we have a motion and a second to continue this to the next meeting?
Richard just informed us that Halsey has suggested he'd give up his salary to pay
for the lights, so with that, in fact, uh-
Thank you.
So, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any post? Motion carries, thank you. Thank you all.
Does that also carry H3, Mr. Chairman?
It does.
Okay.
The, the next item, uh, Mr. Chairman, this is the town council's, item I1, this is correspondence from the Coastal Resources Management Council regarding their routine program change to federal consistency manual.
Make a motion to receive and file.
Seconded.
Motion to receive and files, all in favor?
Aye.
Any post? Thank you.
Also, from the Coastal Resources Management Council regarding the application for an ascent, the deadline for hearing is September 18th.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to receive and file.
Seconded.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any post? Thank you.
Next is from Manuel Pereira, the president of the Santo Cristo Committee, uh, requesting council participation for the procession and festivities to be held on September 11th, 12th, and 13th.
Accept with regards and thanks for inviting us, and a motion to receive and file.
Second.
Motion to receive and file and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any post? Thank you.
Uh, next, from the Director of Community Development regarding the proposed 2015 Community Development Block Grant application, also provided is a typical fair housing resolution for adoption.
Diane, can I just ask you, uh, isn't this Bristol Industrial Park Fire Safety Suppression sort of a million-plus project?
Plus, or is it the difference?
Yeah, how much of that's been funded already?
Um, I want to say we've gotten, over the course of about three or four years, seven hundred thousand, maybe eight hundred thousand.
So, we've got a long ways to go.
Yes.
And it's a pity, to my way of thinking of it, that this takes sixty percent of the money that we get, I mean, there are a lot of other causes. Is there any other way to fund that million dollars with a grant or some appeal to the state or federal? Because I mean, it's just terrible if every year for the next five years, we have to spend most of the money on CDBG on this purpose.
Diane, maybe if you could, and, and please answer Halsey's question, maybe you could remind, maybe not necessarily us, but some that don't know what a CDBG grant is, and what the purpose is, and why it's in front of us.
Sure.
Just kind of give us a quick, but please answer Halsey's question, too.
Okay. So, the CDBG application is an annual application, it's, um, Community Development Block Grant Fund, and it funds programs that benefit, um, national objectives, which are low to moderate income persons, jobs to low to moderate income, uh, people, benefits to presumed low to moderate income people, senior population, it funds programs, um, and, and some services to the low to moderate income population. This particular project has come, the Bristol Industrial Park, to answer your question, has come through the CDBG annual application every year for a few years now, as they sort of piecemeal chip away at the renovations and rehabilitations, and these are specifically fire suppression upgrades to the property. They've applied for other funding through other grants, they haven't been as successful. They did get some grant from the DEM for some remediation of some, um, areas in the parking lot that needed to be redone. Um, I mean, one of the other things that we talked about was a HUD 108 loan, which is another possibility, um, which could apply, they could apply for a, a large amount of money to do a lot of the work, you know, in one shot. We weren't yet there with feeling that that was something that would make sense for us to, us to, uh, to support at this point, but it is something to consider.
Well, let me just say this, you, you are aware that this council has been very concerned about the industrial park, and that we've spent quite a lot of time going into their management and how they do things. But it's like an amoeba, I mean, you push on it, and some bolt changes, and nothing happens, and, you know, this is a classic case of, of a bad way to run something, that all this money occupies a nice funding source for all kinds of other needy things, and takes the most of it, and we don't even know what's happening. I mean, have they done anything at all about any of this?
Yes, they have.
Or is, is the work in progress?
It, it has been in progress, and they, they've-
Well, how about getting them to give the council a report-
Okay.
-of the status of that, and also of the very needed roadway for the meeting of September 29th?
Sure.
And we want numbers, dollars, exactly what's been done.
Okay.
How much is still to be done? How much has been spent? How much do they have in hand, and how much do they want more?
Okay.
Because I don't, I don't want to see this, this thing for five years because of a problem that's not being run right.
Right.
Does that make any sense?
And actually, I was going to kind of go forward with that, that process, and say, does, does saying yes or seeing the value of, of one project preclude another project from happening? Said in other ways, that, did, did someone say, oh, wait a minute, I want X dollars, and we said, no, I'm sorry, we can't do that, because someone has already asked for that?
That's a really good question, and I, I just turned to Julie, because we have a committee, we have a, so we do, just to back up a little bit on the process, we do an advertisement in the newspaper, and I reach out to the groups who have applied in the past, to let them know that the application process is open. We, um, receive applications, and then we have a committee who reviews them, and we look at whether or not, um, we can recommend funding them in their entirety, or some modification, or, and then the prioritization. Uh, and there's two, I think there's two answers to your questions, both of which are, are good answers for this year. The first is that the applications that you see on this list are pretty much the applications that we received. One applicant submitted two applications, and we chose one to advance. So, for this particular year, there wasn't another project that got bumped, so that we could put the Bristol Industrial Park on the list. Going forward, the state has a set aside for economic development, which is, as you can see on our list, the over the cap. It's part of the Commerce RI and the governor's initiative for economic development, and they've got this set aside, and it's going to allow for rolling applications through the year, because what they're finding is, for economic development and for affordable housing projects, things kick up outside of the normal annual application process. And so, they want to show that they are responsive and, and able to, um, take applications for those worthy projects all year long, not just during this application period. So, we split up Mosaicos' request, and we put what we needed to, um, to make up the application within the allocate, allocation, and then we have an over the cap amount. In the future, we can, and even going forward, if something, um, comes in before next year's application, we can apply over the cap outside of this application on a rolling basis. So, the answer is, if next year we get twenty-five applications, and they're all, you know, it's really competitive, and we want to, um, make sure that we fund the best priority projects, we can move all of Mosaicos over the cap. We can also do it outside of this normal application, and say, if they come in in January or February, and say, we're ready to go with the next piece of this renovation, we can apply for them to do that then. So, it's, it's, it's good for us, because it gives us options.
Diane, Julie, I want you to understand, I'm not criticizing your process, I think you have a good committee, and you're going in the right way. What I'm troubled by is, I think this is like a, a deep hole that money's getting thrown into, and I don't know whether it's being used, and whether they're getting anything for it. My concern is the management of this very needy project to protect the industrial park.
Right.
And I don't think it should go on for years and years and years, it should just get done somehow.
Right.
So, that's why I want to see a report on where it stands.
I think that's good, and I will reach out to them for that.
Diane, can I just ask you, so, we've been funding the fire suppression, um, and fire safety for a long time.
And roofs, right.
And the roofs, yeah. So, how much is the project? Is, I think this is maybe what is being asked, right?
Okay.
How much is the whole project to get this done? How much have we already spent? How much is still sitting there in an account? Because I don't think we, they've spent all of it, have they?
Not much, there's, I mean, there's not much left sitting there.
Okay.
We've been very, um, aggressive with them about spending this money, and, um, they've spent, um, I think, all but a small piece of, of one of the earlier program years that they've got, and they've got a discrete project that they're working on. And I think that, oh, I think that's, part of the frustration is that they get grants for very discrete projects, they do those projects, and then they move on to the next project, but it's hard, because the, the project itself is so massive, that they might fix one building group roof and fire suppression, but there's still, you know, acres of, of square footage left to do, so, um-
So, you're proposing in here, this blank question was, not, one hundred fifty-two and two twenty-seven, it's not the difference between the two, like, you know, gee, we could go for two twenty-seven if we went over the cap, and one fifty-two, you're proposing almost like around three hundred and eighty thousand would go to them, right?
Right.
Andy?
Um, I, I think it's a good idea to have them here and explain, and, um, I'm somewhat familiar with it, because I've seen them before the historic district commission several times. Um, and I think the key thing is, the problem is, it's one big sprinkler system for the whole complex. And I believe the number they gave us was seven thousand sprinkler heads, every single one of which has to be replaced.
Wow.
And for the first several years, they were prohibited by the fire marshal from renting the space until they really got enough sets, so there was suppression. I think, and I'll let them tell you, not me, but at least what I've heard them say is, they've, and seen, they've kind of turned that corner now. They do have where the sports complex is, they were able to get that roof fixed, that sprinkler system is online, they're finally getting rental income in. Up till now, it's always been fixing it without being allowed to rent it. As they now are able to replace more of those sprinkler heads, bring more properties online for rental, the equation should change. Um, but that's really the problem, that it's just been one big sprinkler system, and it would have been nice if they could have just gotten a million dollars in year one to do the whole sprinkler system, but they, they didn't get it that way, they've had to chip away at it every year.
But it's also that sprinkler system going into areas where there's just dilapidation, too, you know what I mean?
Right.
So, you're putting in a new sprinkler system, but the roof is leaking everything else, so it's-
Exactly, yeah.
And that's why we need to know what the whole project costs, it's like the sprinkler system, you know, because it's been the roof, it's been the other things, it's been everything spring, you know, mixed in, you know what I mean? It's like, do you just do the whole sprinkler system, and then fix the roofs, or do you do this building, everything, and get it done? And I just think that's part of the dilemma that we've been in. I mean, I think everybody understands the problem, it's just that it's, it's constantly in here, and for how many years for that, because there's other things we might want to do. And also, Diane, you've talked about the ranking in the past as well.
Right, and this is the priority that we recommended.
Chief, you wanted to add something?
Uh, because of, I believe it was five years ago now, that I turned that complex over to the state fire marshal. And to get a real status of where you are relative to replacing a sprinkler head, not replacing a sprinkler head, uh, how the sprinkler system works, if you're going to ask the Mosaicos people to come in and tell you where they are, I personally believe, I would request that the marshals come in and give you a report on where they think they are.
Great point.
I believe that there's a couple different, uh, positions on that right now, as who can rent where, so on and so forth, and, and get their status on it. We follow it, we, we attend their meetings with them, yet they, they are the responsible individuals for when anybody can do anything in that building.
Great point.
Diane, when is this due? So, this is due October 9th?
Because I think there's two questions. One is, to approve this and get all these answers, just on how much it's going to cost, or to wait till the next meeting? Can you wait till the next meeting to get some of these answers back? Because we have to approve, we approve the final, we're the final approval, right?
You have to authorize the town administrator to make the application on behalf of the town.
Right.
And, um, uh, you know, you can certainly carry on without me, but just, I, I won't be at the next meeting, which is part of the reason I put it on tonight-
Yeah.
-so that we would have the time to have you review it when I could be here. But, again, if, if you need to continue it, I can set it up, um, so that they can come, Mosaicos can come and explain to you. I mean, I think we'd like to, you know-
I hear some concerns, and I think that probably makes some sense. I, I also understand the process would be that planning board would have said, they would have given it a sign-off, right?
They voted last night.
Did they have any concerns? Did they give us a-
They, they voted last night, they're, they're, they only make a determination of consistency with the comprehensive plan, which, this is consistent with the comprehensive plan. They raised some of the same questions that Halsey raised, actually, um, and their frustration about this not, you know, feeling like enough has been done over the years. And, you know, it's, it's, I, I, I hear that frustration, I mean, when you think about a project like that, and even though it's a lot of money for our CDBG application, it's not a lot of money, when you look at the scope of the project that is underway out there. I think that, the other thing is that the state, CDBG, um, when we've met with them, they've encouraged this to go sort of building group by building group, so that they could have, because there's a national objective that has to be met, there's jobs that have to be fulfilled. And so, they were feeling sort of, let's kind of manage this in, in, in building groups, so that we can then, like, easily track buildings and jobs and, and businesses, rather than just, you know, blasting the whole thing and losing track of things.
Can I make a suggestion, then?
Sure.
Because I bet this would be in a narrative. Like, if you put this Bristol Industrial Park Fire Safety Suppression, Building G.
Yes.
You know, because-
I'll expand on that.
And then you could track that-
Right.
-over the time, so like, you're going to say, like, the last five years, but we did ABC, and now we're doing this one. Or, it's going to take two years to get G done, because the total cost for doing Building X is going to be five hundred thousand, do you know what I mean? I think it would be helpful to know, like, okay, we're going to work on this building, just as they're saying, here's the cost of the roof, here's the cost of the other repairs, and here's the cost of the fire suppression. I mean, I think that would be very helpful for us to see that, because we're just seeing this big black hole, right?
And actually, to Mary's point-
Right, I agree.
With all of them, and I'm not talking about miles of narrative, but certainly, I think that was a great synopsis of a very expensive project here. It'd be great to know what we're saying, we agree, um, it makes sense to move forward.
Okay.
So, that would be helpful, because I don't have that.
Make a motion to continue this to the next meeting, then.
Yeah.
So, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
So, we have a motion and a second, continue the next meeting, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you for the hard work.
Just for, perhaps for, to be expeditious, the fair housing resolution, even though it's part of this, it really doesn't react to the project specifically, and it is identical language to what the council has adopted previously. Perhaps you would like to just take care of that, so that doesn't have to come back.
I don't have any objection. Is there a motion to that effect?
I will, if we're to discuss, I just.
So we have a motion to.
I'll second for discussion, for discussion. Diane, I was just wondering, the first sentence, just, my belief to mirror state law, could we add on the first line, for protected people, sexual orientation, gender identity, and veteran status?
I don't have a problem with that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, it's fair housing.
Protected, fair housing and protected people.
Right.
Thank you. If my words are okay with that, that's fine.
Could I just ask for, just exactly what it was that you wanted to add?
We'd be adding sexual orientation, gender identity, and veteran status to mirror state law, protected people. In the first line, it's listing a whole bunch of protected.
Certainly.
Thank you for fair housing protections. Thank you.
So that's your amended motion, is that seconded?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
It's a good suggestion.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item, also from the Director of Community Development, you have the council consideration, the draft, natural hazard mitigation plan update.
Get to kill two birds with one stone tonight.
Welcome back, Craig.
Hey. Again, good evening, everybody.
We're not going page by page, Craig, just so you know.
We're not going to go page by page. I do recognize that you just received this at the end of last week, and the intent of presenting tonight is to just give you an overview of the near completion of the project, and to ask for your consideration for approval within a month of tonight's meeting, so that we can move it forward to Rhode Island EMA, and then also up to FEMA. So, project started last year, end of the summer, we identified a local hazard mitigation committee, mainly department chairs, a couple of folks from the general citizens from the community, from the CERT team as well. We kicked off the project at the Harbor Festival, we had a booth, and had some mapping, and asked folks to provide some local knowledge about some flooding issues or anything else that happens in town. We had a public workshop in September of last year, where we presented a report card, which talks about the mitigation action items in the 2010 plan, and where the town is at.
Craig, remind everybody of an action item, give us an example.
An action item, one of the action items is to, one of the ones in the update is to continue with the town's program for retrofitting paved parking areas, so that you're reducing hard surface pavement, so that, you know, you don't have increased stormwater runoff. But that also looks at, we have also added in as a new item, is to look at the dead-end streets that end at the waterfront, so that there's not accelerated runoff from the roadway into the, into the water.
To dealing with drainage issues.
Drainage issues, wastewater treatment facilities.
Okay.
Educational components to the community about flood awareness, working with the community rating system, NFIP. A lot of the items are continuations from the existing plan.
Perfect, thank you.
So, we had the public workshop in September of last year, and we presented the report card, we talked about the mitigation actions that had been completed, we asked, you know, we identified what the funding mechanism was, what the timeframe was for that, and the responsible party. We also presented the items that were not addressed or completed, and presented to the community why those weren't completed. It's important to acknowledge the accomplishments the town has made, and also understand that the hazard mitigation plan is a planning document, and it's, the mitigation action items in the strategy are a sort of wish list, so it doesn't hold the town accountable for completing any of these actions. But having an approved mitigation plan by FEMA enables a town to be eligible for, should there be a disaster declaration, and there's a pocket of money available, the town's eligible to apply for that, so that they can implement some of those higher ticket mitigation action.
Did we not do that semi-recently? Didn't we, weren't we able to take advantage of? Thank you, thank you.
So, you know, the second half of the first public workshop, we opened it up to the, to the community to provide comment, and again, to look at some maps and identify some local knowledge. The local hazard mitigation committee met three times throughout the, over the last year. We also conducted municipal interviews, and one of the pieces for FEMA, as far as the requirement for the update, is to have a robust public engagement or public participation piece. And so we decided to do an online survey as well, which just asked residents how they felt about the preparedness of themselves, as well as the preparedness of the town around hazard mitigation planning. We also had another media, another public workshop in the spring of this year, where we presented the preliminary mitigation action items to be carried, either carried forward from the 2010 plan that weren't accomplished, or the new ones that the committee has developed and wanted to be included in the update. We had our final local hazard mitigation committee meeting, we had Jess Stimson, who is the Rhode Island State Hazard Mitigation Officer. She participated on the committee throughout the project, but she attended that meeting, which was extremely helpful because that meeting was where we prioritized and ranked all the mitigation actions. And she also assisted us in filtering out some mitigation actions that could actually be moved to capabilities assessment instead, so it kind of streamlines things a little bit. Having Jess involved was, was an asset throughout the whole process, because it also, she's not going to see the draft for the first time, she's been part of it all along, so it hopefully expedites the process. So, and the process for REMA is typically a 45 to 90 day period for review. So we're technically not in the queue for, with REMA right now for review. Right now, we're in the 30-day community comment period. So we've forwarded it to the Town of Warren, which is a requirement of FEMA, we forwarded it to Roger Williams University as a stakeholder in the community. Hard copies are available around town, there's copies available on the town website as well for folks to read electronically. And once, we presented this last night again to the planning board, presenting it tonight, and asking for comments back by, within a month, so that we can then have that draft plan go into review, and go into the queue with REMA, so that we can get REMA's review, they can forward it up to FEMA, and the town can get an approved hazard mitigation plan update returned before the existing one expires.
So, Craig, Diane, what's our next appropriate step in regards to this?
So we're asking for the council to review this and give us any comments within the next 30 days.
So by our next meeting, in the 29?
By the next meeting, yes, 29, yes.
Okay.
At that time, you'd like us to approve submitting it to the state?
Yes, unless you have comments that we can address.
Diane, is there like, a section next?
Oh, I'm sorry, the next, the council meeting is the 30th, not the 29th.
I said the 29th, my fault.
Is this, is there, are there sections that are, have been in here for a while, that have been cut and pasted in and just updated, and versus totally new sections?
This is, I would say this is pretty much a rewrite. I think, I think the action items include, it'll say, you know, carry forward from 2010, or a new action item. So you'll be able, when you go through that chapter with the action items, you'll know what's new and what's a carry forward. But the methodology, I mean, it's sort of the same process, but we did more outreach, we did more, we did the survey, you'll see some climate change, sea level rise discussion in there, some more current, you know, best practices and things like that, so.
We also conducted a vulnerability analysis based on, for the climate change component, based on one, three, and five-foot rises in sea level. And we itemized that, as far as the economic impact of that, based on, you know, working with the town, the tax assessor. But we also mapped that as well. And we also did a second vulnerability analysis that looks at the transportation network, and what the vulnerability of the flooding of the transportation network, particularly the evacuation routes in town. So those are both two items that are new to the update.
Nice.
That's very important, when we discuss that at one of the workshops.
Absolutely.
I think this is a book that every resident should have, because this is bigger than, you know, for the viability of our town, we keep saying it, flooding and drainage issues. Thank you for the hard work, and I did actually peruse through the whole thing, because it was a three-day weekend, so.
Ed's a crazy man on the weekends.
Just to kind of speak, I mean, the town has been very successful in getting grants because we have an approved plan, and I think we, the other, the watershed plan is sort of a sister document to this, but we most recently got a generator for the community center from FEMA, because we have the plan. So we've done really well, and I'm excited that we've gone through this process, we've had a lot of good outreach, you know, Greg mentioned the Chowder Fest last year, or the Harbor Fest, rather, and so it's been a good process, we had a good committee, and I also want to thank all the other department heads, and Tony, because everybody, all the other departments participated, Craig reached out, met with them, we, upstairs in Nine Court Street, he had office hours, if you will, one day, and all the department heads dropped in and shared their issues, you know, requirements, action items that they wanted to see, and it was, it was a very good process to get everybody included, so.
We need to keep this top of mind, so this is wonderful.
Diane, how do you want us to submit our comments, through email, or?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Yes, if you could, I mean, email me, or through the clerk, and then we'll put it on the agenda for the 30th, and then you can vote, hopefully, to send it to the state.
So we continue this to the 30th, Lou? Is that the best way to handle it?
Certainly, if you're expecting that something more formal is going to happen on the 30th, we should definitely continue it till the 30th, correct?
So can we have a motion to that effect?
Or, you're going to consider just the comments independently, or do they have to vote on something?
I think, Craig, I'm going to look at you, but I think we'd like, we'd like a vote, yes? Or do we not need a vote?
It doesn't require a vote, it just, FEMA and REMA suggest that when you're going forward with the draft plan, that the folks that make decisions in the community have had a chance to review the plan, and are knowledgeable of the plan, and are.
I'd be more than happy to officially do that, so I think we could give that a couple of weeks to make some comments.
I think we should just give it, do a vote on it, like, just to accept it or move it forward, just so that people know that we did look at it.
Okay.
Or that we.
Yeah, I mean.
And would you like?
The reason for that being is that if FEMA takes, gets the draft plan and approves the draft plan, then the town, within one year, the town needs to hold a public hearing, and the town needs to approve that draft. If you go and make changes to that draft, after FEMA's approved it, you go back through the queue process with REMA and with FEMA, which sets the town back.
That's why we're not in that vote, we're not in that phase, is that what you're saying?
No, no, so we're looking for your comments.
Okay, so you don't have to do a vote.
Which you can send directly to me or through the clerk, and then, when the 30 days is up, and we've got all the comments, we asked the planning board also for theirs last night, so they're going to be submitting any, and then we'll get the comments incorporated into the draft, and then we can move it up to the state.
Don't speak now, and afterwards, hold your peace.
So we have a motion to continue, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, thank you.
I'm sorry, I may have missed something. Was it necessary to continue or not?
It is necessary to continue, because we decided that we would like an official vote for approval on it.
Okay, but that's not going to mess anything up, if there is an official vote.
It is not required, it's, we felt that it was an important enough document to have it official positive response to it.
They want the state to know that they did look at it, and that they endorsed moving it forward. So that would be on the 30th.
So that's what the motion would be, to endorse moving it forward, okay.
Agreed.
Okay, the next item is from the town.
Thank you, Craig.
Town administrator, providing information on last year's revenue and expenditure report for the last night concert.
Now, you do know I requested this year's, right? After it was, it was going to be completed?
Unfortunately, Cheryl has taken a week of vacation, so I did not.
For a year.
For a whole year. No, I, the last time I was on, the impression you wanted to know last year and this year's will be coming to you.
Okay.
But I think you wanted to base the, compare things, you know, how do we do last year, and how do we do this year? Well, that will be coming to you at the next meeting. We'll have a report.
You don't think there's a big deficit?
Of this last concert that we had.
Yeah.
Well, we actually had this during budget time, and that's, there's one item on 2014 that we did not up that amount, so that amount's going to be different too in 2014 compared to 2015. So, yeah, if we can just have the 2015, and we can cross compare, like you said.
Hopefully, there's no deficit.
Please?
Hopefully, there's no deficit.
So, Tony, a couple of.
I'm not going to come around to that one until I see the complete report, though, you know what I mean? And also, Cheryl will, you know, will compile all the sponsors' returns, and then we'll know how we made out this year compared with last year.
Hopefully, it's positive, yeah.
Exactly.
So, Tony, a couple of questions. Out of this nice spreadsheet, which we appreciate getting, for this fine event, the police, fire, and DPW amount to about $4,700. How much of that you think is overtime, and how much is regular time? Is it all overtime?
That is all overtime. And the unfortunate piece is that it falls, not to them, it's not their fault, it just falls on a Sunday, so you're talking about double time, actually.
Now, is that overtime budgeted by us in the budget?
That's incorporated as part of this, as the last night concert.
It's one component in what we consider when we make the budget, isn't it, and decide on overtime allowance?
Yeah, I think it is.
This, well, this piece comes right out of here.
I mean, don't we look at fourth of July, and last night, and a few other things, and try to cover them in the budget?
When you, when you do the budget for the overtime for the police department, isn't in all these departments, isn't this factored in, all these different events?
Not, not this piece, no.
Actually, the police department.
So you say this is unbudgeted.
They separate them to a T, to their overtime budget, if you notice the line items, and how we classify each line item.
Correct.
Well, see, what I'm getting at is, if we had budgeted some of this, it amounts to $4,700, against your deficit of $3,200, so it's 1,500 more than the deficit.
Right.
So, what I'd like to get to is, is all of this unanticipated, $4,700, or was some anticipated in the budget we set for these three departments?
Well, that's incorporated on the amount that we budgeted for the last night concert, and also with the hopes that we get enough from the sponsors to cover all of those costs. So those are not budgeted.
What I'm getting at is, this is a very good spreadsheet of what you cost you to find. But if any of the items in this were established in our budget, then they should be sort of in a different column.
Right.
So maybe this.
But they're not.
Maybe this result of a deficit of $3,200 isn't quite as bad as it sounds.
Right, but this amount.
See what I'm getting at, Julie?
But he's saying it's not, but I'm saying it, I think it should be. In other words, like, we know we're going to have certain events, and we know the DPW, fire, and police have to be at those events, so why wouldn't those be factored into the overtime of those departments, even if it's like, subcategories, like, Fourth of July, you know, last night, whatever else we might have?
Special details, anything like that.
Yeah, yeah.
If I may, counselor, the deficit on this spreadsheet should be 6,000 some, and that's why we took up the topic during budget time, to help out this event a little more by budgeting the extra of the amount you're seeing on this page for 2015, not 2014.
Yeah, good point, yeah.
So said another way, the last night budget item of 15,000 that showed on here was actually 10,000 in 2014. We upped that number this year, not last year.
10,000 or 12,000?
12, my apologies. See? So there's different numbers. Anyway, so what would this, what's this council's pleasure in regards to this?
Well, I first would like to thank Mike Davis and John Roth, David Barboza, Nancy Horn, and Madeline Grimo, and the whole committee throughout the summer that led up to the last night for their efforts, and the Department of Public Works, and the Police Department, and everyone who helps out with this. So, job well done for this season, Michael, and just request the administrator when the final outcome of the numbers come in for 2015, if you could just provide that for this council.
We'll have, we'll have those for the next.
Thank you.
Second.
And could I just ask you, just me, it doesn't have to be a lung, I'm not looking for a sentence or a narrative, I'm just looking for like, generations, like, I don't know what that is. You know, like.
That was the first group, the opening act, five o'clock?
Oh, right, okay. Yeah, so like, Bill Brackett, like, I know who he is, and I think anybody does, but like, you know, is that producer, like, what is it? Like, you know, his little comma, like, what is it, high output?
Like, PA system, or lighting, or something along that line?
Yeah.
Got it.
Like, high output, I don't know what that is.
Title or position, a title or position.
Yeah, there you go.
Like, what it is.
Yeah. So we have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Just need a second.
I have a goal of nine o'clock, and it's 10 of.
I know.
I am Babe Ruth, and I am pointing at the wall right now, ladies and gentlemen, so.
Here's, here's the thing, here's the thing, it slips easily into 10.
And I'm sorry, I was.
Oh, I'm just giving you, I'm not even talking about you.
No, I was, I was taking notes, and the motion was what?
The motion was that we're going to get the new one for the next meeting.
Okay, so is it being continued to the next? Is that what we're doing?
Well, I don't know if it's going to, I don't know if he's going to have those numbers by the next meeting, so.
Continue to the availability of the report.
Of the finding numbers.
Of the 2015 numbers, yep.
Okay, the final item in this category is from the town administrator regarding project updates.
You sounded like Alex Trebek right there.
Well, look.
I'm just wondering if you could form it into a question, but go ahead, please.
No, what you mean, no, I won't. Now, just very quickly, looking at the, the updates there, looking at the terrorist storm, the stormwater project, it's about 90% completed.
And if you haven't driven by there, go by there, it looks phenomenal, they did a wonderful job.
Took words out of my mouth, so. I know, I know. No, but you are, so correct, you need to. It really looks great. Road paving, I stated there that the Ballou Boulevard has been done. Well, Ballou Boulevard has been milled down, and it's ready for, for paving. And if you haven't driven by there, you'll see the big difference now, I mean, it's down to the core. And they will be getting to that, however, they want to, they've already moved to Butterworth, and yesterday they did Hawthorne, all the way through, from Butterworth through, actually, across Fermi, and onto the other side, south of Fermi. And today, they did three additional roads, I can't recall all the names coming up, but they moving up Butterworth, but eventually they can.
Fairmont, yeah, Fairmont, and such and so forth, yep. Fairmont and, yeah, Fairmont and such and so forth, yep.
Right, Slocum, actually, yes. Fairmont and I believe Pataket, I think those were the three streets they got to today. There was just a minor issue there. But I'll be stopping by to have a little conversation with one of our residents there. And there's also a question about the street, one of the streets not being paved in the area. That's because the initial, initial, no, let me try that. Initial assessment by Beta felt that there was not needed, that it was still in very good shape, it was fairly done, was done fairly recent. So there was no need to do it. So in case their resident, any of the residents ask you the question. As you drive down Butterworth, every street there has a sign that says road work, road paving on it at the entrance of that road, that, those are the roads that are being paved. They'll be milled and eventually will be paved. At some point, they're gonna stop all the milling, they're gonna begin to pave so that it doesn't expose the residents to a lot of dust and so forth. So they're being very conscientious about the work that's being done there. So they're moving along pretty nicely with the road paving. The town hall architectural design has, we've had the pre bid meetings and firms will be submitting the, their RFPs, you know, for the proposed renovations here.
Tony, can I ask the scope of that? I assume you're gonna do something with this table and do the audio visual?
It's gonna come back to you. You'll, you'll see exactly.
I mean, are there other areas?
Doing the air conditioning in there?
Air conditioning.
Everything is included. We, we went through the entire piece here, you know, through the entire building. Yes, that is one of the items, the floors, the lighting, the, the port rack to carry all the wires, remove them all from the floor. Because right now, if you walk through some of those areas, you better watch your step. So there's quite a bit of work that's gonna be done, the entrance. So there is much that will be included in that. But you're gonna see the scope of that, you know. This is only to do, the engineer will come back to you. Then obviously you'll have the opportunity.
So in the end, we're gonna have to pick and choose what we do, I suppose. You can't maybe do everything.
That's very possible because the amount they may cost maybe a little bit, but certainly we can work it through different stages or different steps.
And also the seating system's not very old. And the lighting's not very old.
Mine don't keep that in check, whatever.
We don't want somebody to come in like a bull in a china shop and wanna change every single thing that we've done lately.
Not at all. We being very conscientious of that. And we did tell the three firms that came in for the pre bidding and made them aware of that. We don't have all the money, this is not pie in the sky and it's not a magic wand, you know. We do have a limited amount of money to work with and.
But I do hope you'll holler at this table so I can see Mary way down the end there.
I know, I could hear you better, Halsey, I know.
That was discussed.
I can assure you, that was definitely one of the items to be included, that, technology, you know. So there is much in the works, but they'll come back with a proposal, okay? The Prudence Ferry Engineering Design Bid has been awarded. I believe you have that on your packet. The senior center roof has been completed. If you didn't have a chance to drive by, it looks wonderful. It really looks pretty nice, they did an outstanding work job there. Water pollution control drainage improvements, the bathing group has submitted all the plans to the various agencies for them to review and then come back. You're talking about CRM-C, DEM and so forth, all the agencies that would have input as to the project for the drainage from the water pollution that will be running through Fairview. And the Maritime Center structural, as you may have seen it, if you have not been down there, I encourage you to go down there. It's really shaping up pretty nicely, whether it's the minceri work, outdoors as well, inside, you know, the structure, it's really coming around very nicely.
Are you able to confirm that hopefully all this work can be done within the arrangement that Diane worked out to use the full allocation of the, of the grant and our match?
Right, I would defer that to the Capitol Committee, you know.
I hope I can finish everything, we won't have to put new money in.
We're still on track with that project and the budget.
Good.
Yes, thank you.
And Tony, the Byfield soffit, the soffit on Byfield?
That, uh-
Is that gonna get repaired?
Yes, it will. We work and then actually Richard Piment is supposed to be coming back to me with some numbers for that.
Good, fantastic.
Thank you, okay. Thank you.
Motion received and filed?
So moved.
With thanks. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any post? Thank you.
The next item from the treasurer regarding a certain recommendation for certain re appropriations.
This is our annual request to carry forward certain accounts where we had projects that were going and they just didn't make it by June thirty for completion. There's less this year than I've seen since I've started, so that's probably a good thing. These projects, I can just run through them very quickly. The first is our conservation projects, it's twelve hundred dollars. That's planned use is for trail clearing and maintenance by the Conservation Commission at Perry Farm. The next item is the tree planting account and that's twelve thousand two hundred dollars. This project has been bid out already, the work is gonna be performed in September. So that's a project in process. And the last is the comprehensive plan update. This was three thousand dollars. We're in process with the comp plan update and this is part of our contracted amount. So we're just asking that these funds be carried forward for completion of these projects. It's a total of fifteen thousand two hundred dollars.
Okay, move that we carry them forward.
Second?
There's a motion, a second, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any post? Thank you.
Item K one is the periodic report provided by Alan Klepper.
Make a motion to receive and file, chairman?
I'll second with discussion, Mr. Chairman, that look forward to the tri-town meeting, which will take place next Wednesday, I believe. Is that correct? And we can discuss all this great stuff that we get up to date on.
Yes.
So we have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any post? Thank you.
Okay, a couple of executive sessions pending. Now we have the individual council member agenda items, beginning with the chairman.
Nine oh one, not so bad, not so bad with regular business. I'm gonna go with that clock, it's three up.
It's a good night, it's a good night.
I went to the HDC meeting last week and attended and watched seven or eight applicants go through and listening to improvements in the town and the process. And I must say that the process in and of itself, the applicants went through quickly, smoothly. There was requests for certain things, whether it was windows and whatever, and, and things went along nicely as, as a whole. But this was the part that I thought that everybody would very much appreciate. One of the last applicants is the owner of what used to be Pareto's gas station? And they asked for approvals from HDC to take down the canopy. So we should be seeing that coming down pretty shortly. They gotta get the other approvals with, or they may have them already from CMRC and all of that. So, but long story short, we should be seeing that move and the work, the request was, well, what's gonna happen over there? And they're not sure yet, they were talking about maybe a boutique shop and it was the attorney that was representing it. But that's what we shared out there, so I thought everybody appreciated to see that, that that's gonna be changing shortly. Oh, and they were also gonna take out the underground tanks there, I apologize. I wanted to say again that we very much appreciate all that Frank Souza did for this community. I was impressed when I looked around there that there were so many of our town employees who at four o'clock become firefighters. There were so many of our town employees that were there supporting their brother. Our houls, excuse me, our houls, I can't say it, our hearts. Grotte's family, the members of the fire department. To you, chief, we say thank you and anything that we can do, I know that we all stand ready to do it. Thank you.
And Mr. Sweeney?
Just simply, I just wanted to extend my deepest and heartfelt sympathy to the Souza family. Frank Souza was a very special person, he will definitely be missed. Simply, he was a remarkable man. I was lucky to know him and work with him. And I just wanted to commend Chief Martin and the fire department, you gave him the perfect send off, really did. And I know the police department was involved in that well, so, excellent. And Ursula Souza may hope and through this difficult time and we are with you, surround yourself with friends. And, and I, I hope you are able to move one, one day forward and it's just gonna be a difficult time. And, that's it, thank you.
Ms. Perella?
Thank you. I'll try to keep this brief. So, Tony, on Thame Street, I had a conversation with someone who lives in Bristol, actually lives out of Bristol now, but grew up here and is here all the time, but now has a baby and is, you know, so she's using a stroller for the baby. And commented to me how difficult it is to maneuver down on Thame Street because there are not very many curb cuts for accessibility, particularly around the ferry, from the ferry landing through some of the other streets. So, that was just the other day, I really haven't taken a look at that, but I thought I would pass that along and perhaps she could take a look as well? And we could take, you know, look at that.
Just means from, let's say, church.
Maybe like, yeah, in through maybe Bradford, you know, just downtown. If people wanted to maneuver down there either with, you know, with baby carriages, with wheelchairs, et cetera. And she said with the exception of driveways, it was very difficult, so. Thank you, that's it, thank you.
Mr. Stewart?
So, one thing that comes to mind, the last night concert, as myself and family attended, taking a walk through Hall Downtown to get to Independence Park, this council and previous councils and we talk about it in many workshops of economic climate, helping our businesses, changing ordinances, adding to community development to give them the tools to streamline, because that's what we hear is to have businesses come in and go through the streamlined process and give them the tools. But I think once they're given those tools, we have our ordinance and rules to be abided by and we take a lot of time to craft those ordinances and, and we communicate with everybody. The point I'm making is, I saw a couple infractions that took place that night. I did not take them up with the owners that night, but went back the following day. And we do have rules and regulations on the books when there's violations. I just feel that I'd just like to make it a point to my colleagues that we might have to have a more stern discussion on the revision of our ordinance of maybe making it a little more hefty on the fines themselves. So it makes our owners think twice before doing these incidences because it's a privilege and we want them to succeed. But by the same token, we don't want them to break the rules and we do have our compliance officer, but not, everyone could be everywhere at any given time. It was a successful night, I understand, you try to push the envelope, but it falls the liability on the town which we're addressing also. So, I'm not, you know, knocking the whole event or other business owners that abide by it, but I just want to reach out to the business owners is that, as we stated and the chairman stated, when we give these privileges, we will make a statement and we will address it. We're not just gonna sit by and let it happen. Along with that, I just wanna wish all the students and the teachers a very successful and happy school year. And remember the children and buses are out, just to, we had those topics tonight, just look out for safety. Other than that, I hope everyone had a good Labor Day weekend. Thank you, Mike Davis, Sergeant Arms Archie Martins, and everybody who attended the meeting and everyone looking, watching at home, thank you.
Mr. Harrisaw?
It seems to have been a year where we've lost so many very important Bristolians. And I'd like to pay brief tribute to another who passed lately and that is Ursula Boragad. Ursula and her late husband Arthur were very important citizens of Bristol for a long time. And among many other accomplishments, they developed the Medica Manor, which served our town admirably, it was efficiently run, it was established in a very sympathetic approach and made the final element of lives of many people better than they would have been otherwise. Ursula has lately been living in Pointe de Gois of Florida, where quite a few of our other Bristol citizens seem to go to part-time in the winter. His son, Michael, and her grandson live in Bristol. And we remember them all as very fine people, there were five children and there are, I think, seventeen grandchildren and many great grandchildren. And Ursula herself was a very wonderful individual who accomplished a lot and had a zest for life that was impressive. Secondly, I'd like to again thank the town for having that last night wonderful event on my birthday.
You're welcome.
Especially appreciate it.
Happy birthday.
Only thing is, next year, I think my birthday might not be on a Sunday, but we'll see what happens. Anyway, besides that, I would like, with your permission, Tony, to next week make a request of the Public Works for some data. I'm particularly interested in the data and course regarding rubbish pickup and recycling, which I think bears on this proposal that's before us and has been continued to the next meeting. Among the questions I'd ask is how nearly we are up to capacity in the actual ordinary rubbish pickup? Because we wanna be careful that we don't tamper the system to drive us into, say, a third packer and more people. I mean, it's possible sometimes you make a change, which on the surface looks desirable and you have a secondary effect that might be undesirable. So that'll be the thrust of my questions, which I think I'll send to you, Tony, with the ask, with the request that you would vote in on to the director. And finally, I think many of us received this same letter from Brian and Renee McDougall concerning our very wonderful recreational summer. Walter and his group took care of six hundred and fifty-five youngsters in the summer program this year. And I understand Walter is planning to give us a very thorough report on details and how that all went. But this letter is so helpful and appreciating it. This couple has two young sons, Aiden who's nine and Matthew's eight. And they went into this without understanding what it was, but they felt the program was terrific. And a couple of quick quotes, she says that the boys had amazing counselors who made it a priority to connect with them and that the program was extremely well-run, organized, safe, and an amazing opportunity for the two children. They absolutely loved it. So, I think when Walter makes his report, we as a council should do what we can to recognize his whole staff and something that this town is very, very outstanding.
Halsey, I agree wholeheartedly. They also mentioned, I like the quotes that you shared and also said Walter and Sarah. Sarah Klein, the assistant director, phenomenal job. My son actually attended camp, I don't know, two days or so, changed his mind on it, no reflection on the camp, of course, but had opportunity to go out and all. The last day there, they had this massive waterslide. And it's, it's impressive, it just reflects so well and it's a great example of the wonderful things that we do here. And I am, I for one, and I know I speak for all of us, I'm very proud to be here and be part of Bristol and be leadership in Bristol. Thank you.
Yeah, we want everything in Bristol to be number one.
Darn it, yes we do.
This is certainly a case that is number one.
Agreed, well put.
All good stuff. Okay, town administrator agenda items?
The, I would like to thank publicly the Warren Fire Chief, Al Galinelli. He was very instrumental right from the onset of when the accident happened, right through, he was with us, you know, all the way through, provided great support, not just at the scene of the accident, but then thereafter, providing support, mutual aid so that all our volunteers could put our brother Frank to rest. So, a big thank you goes to Chief Al Galinelli. And obviously, I cannot say enough about our two departments, which already has been stated, whether it's, you know, Chief, Chief Martin in his department, as well as Chief Canario in his department as well, maintaining the, the smooth transition throughout town for traffic flow and all to make sure that no one had to worry about any safety concerns. So, they both, very appreciated and a big thank you goes to both of them. Thank you.
With regard to the executive session, I'd like to request a motion to add an item for discussion purposes only. To add to the agenda under L, number three, Noon's Property Management- Management versus Bristol Planning Board, State Housing Appeals Board Appeal Number 2015-2 for discussion only.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Then, I guess I'd like a motion to go into an executive session under Rhode Island General Laws 42-46-5A2 litigation, Bristol Warren Regional School District.
So moved.
Second.
And remain in executive session, well, you want to vote on that, you want all three of them?
Yeah, let's put them all together.
Okay, and remain in executive session for litigation under Rhode Island General Laws 42-46-5A2, Hopeworth Association versus Town of Bristol, also known as Clipper Way, and then remain in executive session for the recently added number Noon's Property Management versus Bristol Planning Board.
So we have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, everybody.